The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council of 2021 is now called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation, which will be given this evening by Gil Michelle Lead Pastor at that church downtown.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all [inaudible].
All right, let us pray. Father God, we thank you so much for your goodness and your mercy that endures forever. Lord, I ask your blessing upon the proceedings that go forth from this point forward. I pray for wisdom for those you've entrusted to serve our county, and I ask, Lord God, that according to Psalm 61, where David prayed, "Lord, when my heart is overwhelmed, lead me to the rock that is higher than I." Lord, we acknowledge that we need a wisdom that goes beyond our degrees, goes beyond even our personal experiences and our collective experiences, but we need a wisdom that comes from you. And so, Lord, we ask for that, for contentions, Lord God, to be eased by grace, and for your Holy Spirit to cause us to walk in wisdom that goes beyond the things we see in front of us, but for the greater good for those that we in turn serve. We thank you and we ask your blessing, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Next, our petitions, communications, and miscellaneous matters. Mr. Krasinski.
Mr. President, I have a few reappointments to the On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board. Robert Nierenberg, John Creed, and Tim Murray be reappointed to the On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Krasinski. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Robert Nierenberg, John Creed, and Tim Murray are reappointed to the On-Site Wastewater Advisory Board. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the September 14, 2021 public hearing?
Move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes from the September 14, 2021 public hearing are approved. Report from the county auditor.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Report from county commissioners?
No report.
Report from any council special committee? Hearing none. Next on the agenda are first readings. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 113-21?
Resolution determining that the qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming resolution number blank of the Sancho County Council declaring an area of that county to be an economic revitalization area, confirming resolution, petitioner Mishawaka Leasing Corporation.
Bill Number 113-21 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Number 114-21 in ordinance to the Sancho County Council approving a compensation agreement between the Sancho County, Indiana and the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge, Number 155, regarding merit officers of the Sancho County Police Departments for the time period commencing January 1, 2022 and ending December 31, 2024. Petitioner Sheriff.
Bill Number 114-21 is assigned to the Budget and Administration Committee?
Bill Number 115-21 in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at 54565 Sage Road from A Agricultural District to C Commercial District, petitioner Area Plan Commission.
Bill Number 115-21 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill 116-21 in ordinance approving the petition for a special use filed by WTMC Real Estate LLC for property being located at 12646 Heather Park Drive, petitioner WTMC Real Estate LLC.
Bill Number 116-21 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill 117-21 in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for property located at 50770 Princess Way from I Industrial to C Commercial District, petitioner Merrill Realty Company LLC.
Bill Number 117-21 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill 118-21 in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for addressed and unaddressed property located at abutting 10371 and 10389 McKinley Highway totaling two acres, more or less, from our single-family district to I Industrial District, petitioner Robert Kaiser and M.M. Brook LLC.
Bill Number 118-21 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee?
Bill 119-21 in ordinance amending and supplementing Title 15 Land Uses, Chapter 154 Planning and Zoning of the Sancho County Code as amended for unaddressed property located on the south side of Cleveland Road approximately .3 miles west of Live Road, containing 52 acres, more or less, from our single-family district to I Industrial District, petitioner James H. and Barbara K. Kidder.
Bill Number 119-21 is assigned to the Land Use Planning Committee? That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda is resolution, Bill Number 105-21. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
Resolution of the Sancho County Council declaring a portion of Sancho County an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-1, petitioner Ladig Systems, Inc.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill Number 105-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Chris Brown, Economic Development Specialist with the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, offices on the 7th and 11th floor of this building. Before you deny it is Bill 105-21, a declaratory resolution for a tax phase-in for Mishawaka Leasing Corporation operating as Ladig Systems Incorporated. They are located at 14535 Dragoon Trail in unincorporated Mishawaka and Council District I. Ladig is a family-owned business that provides world-class bulk storage and reclaim solutions in its 57-year history. Current facility, as you can see on the map, is approximately 100,000 square feet of manufacturing space that includes state-of-the-art blasting and powder coating facilities. The petitioner is seeking both real and personal property tax phases to expand their operations at this address. This would include a 40,000-square-foot addition on the north side of their existing building at an estimated construction cost of $2.5 million. There is anticipated also to be a $2.8 million investment into new equipment, including CNC lathes and cranes. The expansion is anticipated to create 10 new jobs. ED staff asks for your support in declaring the property an economic revitalization area for purposes of this tax phase-in. Win Ladig of Ladig Systems would like to make a few comments as well.
Win Ladig, 14450 Madison Road, Mishawaka, Indiana. Thank you, Chris. As Chris said, I'm the co-owner of Ladig Systems along with my son Daniel, who now is the CEO. My father started that company about 60 years ago. We design, manufacture, and service large customized storage and handling systems worldwide. Over the past 20 years or so, we've undergone several expansions, and I've stood before this committee a couple of different times asking for abatements, which I believe we have successfully completed, and I thank you very much for your help in that. We've, over the last couple decades, we've more than tripled our number of employees. We're up to just over 100 employees now, and we're at the place where we need to begin the most expensive expansion that we've ever undertaken to date, and we're ready to start Phase One of this two-phase expansion to begin by adding 35,000 square feet of heavy manufacturing space. A thing I want to just emphasize here to the public and to the council is that our company has always been a community-focused company, and by that I mean we hire and train local people, often with no prior experience. We pay very well, significantly above the average in our area. We provide ongoing opportunities for their professional growth and development, and truly want every one of our employees to achieve the highest possible potential, and we want to develop a skilled workforce within our own community. The other aspect of being community-focused, for me, for our company, is that we try to model community involvement as a company and encourage our employees to do the same thing. So, we've established a number of long-term partnerships with nonprofits in our county, and we want our community, our county, to be a better place to live, a better place to raise our families. It's expensive and not without risk to run a company like ours, especially in this day and age, and that's why, again, we come before you as a council to ask for consideration and because we truly believe that the expansion that we're proposing is an investment that will provide ongoing benefits to our entire community in many, many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Mr. Katanzright?
Mr. Ladig, I remember touring your plant on the last abatement you came to us for, and I mentioned when your son was here during committee last month, and I saw in your workforce that you had a lot of diversity, and you had people who were making reentry back into our community. And I asked your son the question a few weeks back, you know, are you guys still doing things like that at your company?
I'm a little bit hard of hearing, so if you could just repeat the gist of the question.
I spoke to your son a couple of weeks ago, and I remember when you were here before us, 10-plus years ago. You were, you had a very diverse workforce, and you were hiring people that were making reentry back into our community, and I asked your son a couple of weeks back, is that a plan you guys still do to this day? Do you guys still hire like that?
Yeah, absolutely. We just, just a few months ago, we were able to give a second chance to a guy who just made some mistakes, was in prison, looking for a new start in life, and so we were giving him a try, and honestly, he's doing superb.
I appreciated that then, when you made those comments and when we learned that in the years past, and I appreciate you as a local entrepreneur doing the same thing today, and our community needs more businesses and more entrepreneurs like your son and yourself, doing the kinds of things you do to make San Joe County a better place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for the petitioner?
More for Area Plan, if you could, Chris. The memorandum that was sent dated, what is it, September 8, towards the end there, talks about they're currently evaluating the workbook. You guys have an update on that evaluation?
Yeah, I'll answer. Yes, the workbook should be complete. We will circulate that final workbook with the confirming resolution for committee at the end of the month. There was a question about training, I think. We originally had some of the training that, when I was originally given the application, didn't have training points on it for those add-on points. We've gone back and forth with the company, they've provided some documentation that shows that they do indeed qualify for those points. So, we've updated that workbook. We've also had all of the abatement figures run for the schedule. Right now, I think we're looking at a five and five, possibly a five and six, so five-year personal and then five or a six-year real property, but that'll be part of the confirming process as we move into those kind of negotiations.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill Number 105-21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 105-21. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to pass, Bill Number 105-21 was made by Councilman Root. It was seconded by Councilman Cantor Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Carries eight zero.
Thank you.
Nine zero, excuse me.
Bill Number 105-21 passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you, council.
Next, we have the adoption of the New Carlisle Library, the Airport Authority, Solid Waste Management, and the St. Joseph County 2022 Budget. Clerk, will you please read Bill Number 96-21?
96-21, the 2022 budget submitted by New Carlisle Library.
Petitioner?
Yes, Stephanie Murphy, Director of New Carlisle Olive Township Public Library at 408 South Bray Street in New Carlisle, requesting the adoption of our 2022 budget.
Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on Bill 96-21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on Bill 96-21. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass, Bill Number 96-21 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on Bill 96-21? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill Number 96-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 121?
Ordinance for Appropriations and Tax Rates, Budget Form 4, Solid Waste.
I wasn't expecting to speak. We had the public hearing last month, so I would just ask that you pass the budget as was proposed.
This is the adoption, so you already did the public hearing.
I'm sorry, okay, my bad, okay, all right.
But it was good hearing from you anyway, Mr. Shevish, as always.
You want to come try your chair on?
Yeah. I say it's good hearing from you anyway. I know you are.
Do I hear a motion on Bill Number 121?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass, Bill Number 100-21 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on Bill 100-21? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Let the record show that Bill Number 100-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 101-21?
Ordinance for Appropriations and Tax Rates, Budget Form 4, Airport Authority.
Do you have a motion on Bill Number 101-21?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass, Bill Number 101-21 was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Katanzright. Any further comments from any council member on 101-21? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Record show that Bill Number 101-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 102-21?
Ordinance for Appropriations and Tax Rates, Budget Form 4, Sancho County, Indiana.
Do I hear a motion on Bill 102-21?
Motion for approval.
Mr. File?
Our 2021 budget was for about $184 million, and our estimated receipts for 2022 are $189 million, providing a $5 million improvement in the budget and staying within the income that we have. And so, I very much support a program that would take that $5 million of added income and particularly support our employees for more money. The problem I have with the item before us is that it is for $192 million and proposes that we go $3 million into debt in order to support that action. And so, it's over the debt issue that I questioned this item, not over the fact that we would be spending the income that's available that would take us up $5 million and therefore be able to greatly help our employees and their income. So, that's my question having to do with this item. I'd also like to say that I still think that there are great many people in San Joe County that are suffering a great deal of financial difficulty. For one thing, we have 40,000 people in San Joe County that are under the federal poverty level, and for them, difficulties in terms of more taxes aren't much on my mind, but the main point here is simply the question about going into debt when we already have $5 million available to improve this budget.
Any other comments from any council member on Bill 102-21?
Mr. President, do you have a second?
No, not yet. There was a motion made to pass Bill Number 102-21. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The motion was made, the first was made by Mr. Krasinski, is that correct? There was a motion to pass Bill Number 102-21 made by Councilman Krasinski, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on 102-21?
Just that I would view it that we are spending our excess reserves in order to increase the pay, the largest thing is increasing the pay of our employees that's long overdue, and we have planned for deficit spending for many years. 2019's budget, I believe, was over $1.5 million projected deficit, and 2020 was close to that, which we didn't reach any of that. So, those savings, along with all of the hard work that we've done over the last eight years, 10 years, getting ready for the fiscal cliff and for all of this, we've prepared ourselves for this and built up those reserves, and I think it's time to spend them, whether, as we said during all of our negotiations, all of our discussions of this budget, we can't do this every year, but it's time and we have the ability to, and I think it would be a shame if we didn't.
Any other comments from any council member on Bill 102-21?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cantor Ricky?
Steve, maybe as our financial guy and since I'm kind of a numbers guy, do you recall our projected deficit spending for this budget year when we were first talking about the fiscal cliff and stuff a couple of years ago?
I don't. I would have to guess it was in the $2 million range off the top of my head.
And what is our actual deficit spending if we pass the budget?
$2.4 million.
Thanks.
So, we're close to what was projected?
We are.
Based upon uncontrollable factors due to the fiscal cliff?
Correct, and I'll elaborate on Mr. Nolan's comment. 2020 was our fiscal cliff year. 2020, we also projected a deficit in excess of $2 million. It just so happened that it was not as bad as we projected.
Correct, and so was 19. 19 was significantly better than the prediction. What I'm saying is that we have done better than these projections all along, has got us into this position with all of these excess reserves, which is currently at nearly 30%?
Yeah. We started the year. What is the reserve balance, 20 something million?
26 million? Yeah, it's over. Yeah, so it's at 30%, which is about as high as it's been in most of your careers. So, that's, I object to the concept of we're going into debt. Sounds like we have a reserve, a huge reserve, so we can afford to spend it, and those employees that we referenced in San Joe County, they work for San Joe County too, and that's okay. You know, so they're going to, we're going to take care of that. So, if you want to help workers in San Joe County, then we can approve this budget. That'll help the workers in San Joe County.
The county government can't actually go in debt with a budget, right?
You're not allowed to run a negative cash balance in the general fund. That would be a no, that would be a no-no.
Yeah.
You also can't borrow for operational expenses. I think that agrees with that statement twice.
Yes, thank you.
So, but when you use that term deficit spending, then that's what that implies? I think we're mixing two terms. Debt, going into debt would be borrowing, in my definition. Deficit spending, you could be using your own cash reserves, in this case, that's what applies. You have $26 million in cash, you're allowed to use it.
Well, my definition of deficit spending is that you spend more than your income. It's, I think, a fairly simple definition.
That's correct. And that is correct, Mr. File, but at the same time, in my opinion, with all the uncontrollables that we've been dealing with in past years because of the fiscal cliff, I think it's justified. That's just my opinion.
I think the clarification was there's a difference between deficit spending, which this is, and going into debt, which this is not.
Correct. That's the point, that's exactly what I'm saying. Any further comments from any council member on Bill 102-21?
Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Tullian?
No.
I'm sorry? Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
No.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries six to three.
Let the record show that Bill Number 102-21 was passed by a vote of six to three. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill Number 103-21?
103-21, in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of San cho County, Indiana for the year 2022.
May I have a motion on Bill Number 103-21?
Motion for passage.
Second.
Motion to pass, Bill Number 103-21 was made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess.
I would like to have a clarification here. This is just a follow-on to the first item, right?
Yes.
This just flows out of the decision about how we spend money, correct?
This, Mr. File? This bill always walks in tandem with the budget because it lists the salaries of each of the employees that are employed by the county and required by the state.
So, it flows out of a budget decision?
It does. They're in concert together. The budget reflects the numbers in the salary ordinance, and the salary ordinance reflects the numbers in the budget.
Okay.
Any other comments from any council member on 103-21? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzright?
I did want to say some things. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Katanzright?
I just want to say, I think in terms of salaries for the county employees, I think we've come a long way. I'm proud of the work that this council has done, raising the floor for the lowest-paid county employees is important. I don't think our work's done yet. I think we still have more work to go, but when I got on the council many years ago, then auditor Joe Nagy told us we should, we were hurting financially back then, and that's when we, I think we worked to pass the local county option income tax, but we didn't have any surplus budget back then, and he said the goal one day would be for us to try and attain ideally 15% surplus in our budget. So, I think we've gotten there through hard work. I think we've gotten there through discipline, budgetary discipline, and we certainly can afford to do the things we're doing with the surplus budget we have. I think the employees deserve that, and I think we've come a long way, and I think we've got, again, like I said before, more work to do, and I'm proud of the work that the majority of this council has done to help bring the employees up to where they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from any council member on 103-21?
The other comment I'd make is what I said to begin with, which is in support of greater income to our employees. It's just a matter of what we do with the deficit spending. That's my issue, not whether or not the people should have some income and some improvements.
Thank you. Mr. Krasinski?
Mr. Morton, I want to thank the auditor's office for their long hours and especially the colleagues up here for the many hours that we put in to get to where we're at right now. now. $26 million is a lot of money, you know, and I credit John Murphy for all the hard work that he has put in and always available when we needed him, Saturday, Sunday evenings and whatever, and especially Mr. Dalton for his hard work. But we do have a long way to go, as Mr. Katanzirite says, and we're raising that bar, you know. We're keeping our employees in accounting at the top of our minds, and once the budget is distributed to everybody throughout the county, they will see that we have tried to do the best we can with what we had to work with, and I credit everybody involved in getting us to this point.
Thank you. Any other comments from any council member on 103-21? Ms. Hess?
I would just like to echo what Councilman Krasinski said, and also this puts our employees at a rate that's commensurate with what's being paid in the county and the private sector right now. So raising that floor to 32,000, I think, hopefully will be a boost to some of our employees and rewarding that up the chain a bit as well. So we're glad we were able to do that this year by having the additional revenues available.
Thank you. Any other comments from any council member on 103-21?
Mr. President.
Mr. Kanericki?
Thank you. Just sort of to echo, but then to make it a little bit figures-based, that $32,000, which includes pretty competitive health care as well as a pension benefit, works out to over $16 an hour. Is that right?
1641.
1641 is now the minimum wage for a St. Joseph County government employee. That's, that ain't bad.
In my opinion, the $5 million that I talked about would provide for that $32,000 minimum, and therefore I would support the $32,000 minimum based on the $5 million I talked about.
Any other comments from any council member on Bill 103-21? Hearing a clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzirite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
No.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mr. Tulloyan?
No.
Mr. Tulloyan, excuse me for messing up the order, but the motion carries six to three.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 103-21 was passed by a vote of six to three. Next, our salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 110-21?
An ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021. Petitioner, auditor, this is Mike Hammond, St. Joe County auditor, with offices on the second floor of this building.
Mr. Hammond?
What?
Hold on, sir, please.
What's that?
Hold on one second.
Okay.
Ms. Hess, committee report.
Mr. President, Bill number 110-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hammond, please, sir.
Mike Hammond, St. Joe County auditor with offices on the second floor. We have a situation in our office where we have people who have been out sick, folks having, one guy having hip surgery now just today. So we need to get some part-time employees at $15 an hour for, at least through the end of the year. So two of them, that would come out to $9,600 bucks, so four pay periods of 80-hour increments each.
Any questions from Mr. Hammond from council? Hearing none will open a public hearing on Bill 110-21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none will close the public hearing on Bill 110-21. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 110-21 was made by Councilman Krasinski. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing a clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirite?
Yes.
And Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero. Thank you.
Let the record show that Bill number 110-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 107-21?
An ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021. Petitioner, county jail, police?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
You're muted. Major Noonan?
This actually isn't ours. This was actually through the maintenance department, I believe.
Oh, my apologies.
Steve Dalton fill in for the maintenance department. No offices in this building. You'll recall that there have been some changes to the hourly rate for housekeepers. Those changes were implemented immediately as opposed to waiting until 2022 because we could not hire anyone. This is a transfer so that those housekeepers can be paid the new rate, and the dollars are being pulled from another line item that has not been used, so it is budget neutral.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none will open a public hearing on Bill number 107-21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed on 107-21. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 107-21 was made by Councilman Kanericki. It was seconded by Councilman Krasinski. Any further comments from any council member on 107-21? Hearing a clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirite?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 107-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 108-21?
An ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021. Petitioner, county jail, police.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much.
I'll speak again, Steve Dalton, on behalf of maintenance. This is a companion bill, similar transfer for the same exact reason, the part-time housekeeping hourly rate being increased so that we can hire people to work here in this building.
Any questions from council? Hearing none will open a public hearing on Bill 108-21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 108-21?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 108-21 was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilwoman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member on 108-21? Hearing a clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Record show that Bill number 108-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 111-21?
An ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021. Petitioner, sheriff?
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Steve Noonan, executive officer for the St. Joseph County Police Department, offices 401 West Sample Street. This is a position that the sheriff is looking to create for a social worker to work with our mental health officer. The money that we currently were awarded approximately a year ago, a domestic violence grant, which is covering the salary of one of our officers who works with the social worker from the Family and Justice Center. This would be an additional social worker to work with Sergeant Benicki, who is the mental health officer. As an example, today I just read an article where the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill closed their, for classes today because they've had two recent suicides. The chancellor was saying that we have a mental health crisis in this country. Since Sheriff Reddman has taken office, he's taken steps to deal with mental health instead of particularly inside our facility but also outside our facility. So this is just a continuation of that.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none will now open a public hearing on Bill number 111-21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on 111-21?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 111-21 was made by Councilwoman Hess, and it was seconded by Councilman Kanericki. Any further comments from any council member on 111-21? Hearing a clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Let the record show that Bill number 111-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill, Bill number 112-21?
An ordinance amending ordinance 7620, the same being in ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of St. Joseph County for the year 2021. Petitioner, health department.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
President Morton just comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Yes, this is Amy Rupe, administrator for the Department of Health with offices on the eighth and ninth floor of the county city building. And before you, as a request for appropriations for a grant that we received from the CDC to help get community health workers out into our community.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none will open a public hearing on Bill 112-21. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to the bill? Hearing none will close the public hearing on 112-21. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 112-21 was made by Councilwoman Hess, and it was seconded by Councilman Kanericki. Any further comments on this bill? Hearing a clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
File, here.
Yes?
Yes.
Ms.?
All the above.
Yeah. Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
Mr. Root. Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one.
Let the record show that Bill number 112-21 was passed by a vote of eight to one. Next, we have public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed at our September 28, 2021 committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read Bill number 109-21?
Rita Glenn, St. Joseph Circuit Court Clerk. I'm not sure this is the appropriate time or not to bring up, so, but I would like to just make a quick comment about the budgets. Am I able to do that? I'm sorry?
May I have a motion on Bill number 109-21?
Motion for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass Bill number 109-21 was made by Councilman Katanzirite. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member in regards to Bill 109-21? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tulloyan?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzirite?
Yes.
Mr. Kanericki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes, but no on P.
Okay.
What did he say?
Okay.
No on letter P.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
So the motion carries nine to zero with the exception of an eight to one vote on section P of that particular bill.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 109-21 was passed by a vote of nine to zero, except on item P, which was passed by a vote of eight to one. Next, we have Bill number 106-21. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
An ordinance of the St. Joseph County Council amending Title 15, Chapter 154, land usage of the St. Joseph County Code to add childcare home as a permitted use in the agricultural district and revise a sign regulation. Petitioner, St. Joseph County Area Plan Commission.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
Mr. President, Bill number 106-21 comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Yes, good evening. Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff with offices on the 11th floor of this building. Once again, this is a pretty straightforward revision to the zoning ordinance. The first part would add operator occupied childcare home as a permitted use in the agricultural district. This is mainly an effort to bring consistency between state law regulating childcare homes and the local zoning ordinance. The second part of this text amendment would remove off-premise signs from the scope of a sign regulation which restricts the changeable copy or electronic message center portion of a sign to only 40% of that sign. We find that this was never meant to actually apply to off-premise signs such as digital billboards, and it doesn't really make sense in that context, given that these signs already have to meet stringent spacing requirements from residential uses and others that could be adversely affected by the increased light from a full EMC display. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
This is very exciting.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none.
Thank you, sir. Hearing none will now open the public hearing on Bill number 10621. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on 10621. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass. Bill number 10621 was made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilman Cantorecki. Any further comments from any council member in regards to 10621? Hearing none, clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Tullion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Mr. Cantorecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number 10621 was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, Bill number 6521 has been withdrawn at the request of the petitioner. Is that correct, Mr. Agostino?
It has not been withdrawn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, tabled. Okay, tabled, my mistake. Tabled at the request of the petitioner. And that's the same with Bill number 7621, tabled at the request of the petitioner?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is unfinished business. Next is new business. Next is privilege of the floor limited to three minutes on items not on tonight's agenda, but I do believe, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, dear council. Peter J. Agostino, attorney with offices at 131 South Taylor Street, South Bend, Indiana. I am up here right now for purely selfish reasons, and that is that to ask the council to consider amending its agenda format so that when there are tabled matters that they be addressed at the beginning of the meeting as a courtesy to some people that may appear sometimes for these meetings, including myself.
And Mr. Agostino, that, my apologies, when you requested that both of these matters be tabled, and we did get the email, I didn't really expect you to be here. So, we did talk about it in caucus, so my apologies.
Okay, no, no problem. I just thought I'd make that recommendation and that request, and I know there's others.
Because you normally.
Less painful than myself.
No, no, because normally when we request a table like this, you know, I usually make an announcement at the beginning, or there have been cases where we actually try to get that word out if it's going to be something controversial, so people will not show up for nothing. So I really didn't expect you to be here. So that's my apologies.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll let you guys get done before seven. Thank you.
Okay.
Is this possibly that the Italians want us to get more organized with what we do?
That's what Mark was pretending to say.
Look at this guy. Who talks like this?
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with Ms. Ben making comments tonight on privilege of the floor. I believe she's going to talk about the budget, but that was on tonight's agenda. Just want to make sure that's okay for.
No, no, sir.
Are we okay with it?
Yeah, I guess.
I'm asking, it's not my call. Because there again, privilege of the floor.
I apologize, I wasn't getting a copy of the budget till today. To make public comment last in September.
I'd say no, but I'm one of nine.
That's why I'm asking. We have one no. Mr. Cantorecki? Yes? Mr. Katanzright?
Sure.
Two?
Yes.
There's three. I'm fine with it. Four?
I'm okay.
Five? Mr. File?
I have reservations, but okay.
Okay, six?
We're already off the hook, we already got five.
All right, fine, all right. Hey, ma'am.
I appreciate the opportunity. Again, it's more of a comment, I guess I just need to get off my chest because of a letter that was sent out April 19th saying that 1% was going to be asked by all elected officials and department heads. And I just, all day after I got the budget, I was kind of struggling trying to figure out what is the purpose of asking elected official and department heads to come up with the budget with a letter provided, signed by you, the commissioners, and the auditor's office, and then just kind of do what you want anyway. I guess there was a lack of communication, a total lack of communication. There's disparity, disparity, excuse me, in the amounts of money that are going to certain departments and certain offices. And I thought that the letter that stated 1% across the board was what we were asked to follow, and I guess that was only for a chosen few, but thank you very much for the opportunity.
Ma'am, I'd like to comment on your comment. Anyone up here or the auditor's office, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my interpretation of that letter that goes out every year is a guide. Okay? And if I'm wrong, please, please correct me, because we have stressed over the years, when I say we, the auditor's office, the council, that we are trying not to do a cookie cutter approach to the St. Joe County budget. But we feel strongly, because of many reasons, and one of those reasons being, which we had no control over, we feel like we have to send some type of guideline every year to give department heads a goal to try to reach. Now, that goes right into the reason why we meet with the departments, basically the bigger departments, if not all departments, that all have different circumstances. So, when you stand there and say that we put this letter out and then you just do what you want to anyway, I don't look at it like that. But everybody has their right to their opinion on any and everything we do.
Well, in the past years, I know for sure that our office had come up with a pay structure which got us probably one of the first bigger raises that we've ever had in our office because our people were making $24,000. Now, with the monies, how it was distributed, has totally blown that out of the water. Because we were going with people that had been there from one to five years, and without any discussion and/or communication with my office, I will speak for my office, we are back at square one. And again, as it was stated in the Tribune is how I found out about the monies that might be appropriated in the budget. They might be distributed, and it said 1% for elected officials. I know that's not true, but thank you. I appreciate it.
I can't speak for the Tribune.
Okay.
Okay? I will not even fathom trying to speak for what the Tribune said.
Well, that's the only communication I've had.
Rita, Rita, normally like our office to get back to you, so I apologize for any lack of communication there. I guess what I'm struggling to understand is, I mean, the guidance went out in April, you're right, 1%. Things changed between April and June and July when we saw where we were going to be financially, was a much better position. So, I can speak for myself, I can't speak for the council, but we thought that if we have this extra money, we're able to do, we're able to take care of folks, we're going to go ahead and do it. And we didn't, I guess I didn't think of how that would screw up your structure, but you're getting, employees are making more money now than they would have with the 1% guidance, correct?
Okay, yes.
Maybe quite a bit more, yeah?
Well, but here's the deal, our other raises that we went ahead and did that I, a couple years ago, when we, when the prior clerk was in office, it was actually the raises came from us giving up people and monies out of our own budget.
But you don't want to go, you don't want to revert to the 1%. You want that, you still want your employees to make that money.
Right, but I guess a lot of the disparity, again, is also in elected officials, but thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Cantorecki, did you want to say something?
Well, I was going to comment on the process and, you know, we, what revision are we on? Six, seven, eight budget book? So, we have spent certainly a lot of time on this, and probably for the last several months, for the council, this has been something that it's almost all we've talked about and thought about. But maybe for some of the department heads, you haven't been involved in the process, and I do apologize for that. You know, definitely, it should be said that the guidance that we issued, the first draft of these budget books were very close to that guidance. And it was only as we learned more about income tax and revenue that we saw an opportunity to maybe do more. And I can see your frustration where you've created a structure that, you know, we may have interrupted. I mean, looking at this, it looks like most of your raises are four to 5% for a lot of the staff in there. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the interest is in to, you know, create like an incentive structure to give your employees something to advance towards, this is only a budgeted amount? Is it permissible to still do scaling within a budgeted amount? If somebody's budgeted at 40 and the department head wants to pay 38 until they pass certification X?
Even though this budget has passed?
What I'm saying is, this is your maximum pay? So if there was, you know, if you wanted to maintain a structure that didn't exceed this maximum pay, and so create an incentive structure, I think you could do that.
Can that be distributed to anybody, including elected officials in the office?
No. Well, nobody could make more than what's budgeted. So I think that would be the issue. Somebody could make less than what's budgeted. So your point to where you've created a structure where it sounds like maybe it's in the intention of giving people something to work for, I think that could still work.
Rita, hold on a second. Again, I appreciate it, but I think lack of communication when it should have been noted, hey, there might be a chance that you can come in and re-talk about your budget because when I went in for my budget, I was pretty much flatlining. Asking if I had any more people, if there was any more money that I could give somewhere else to give back.
I don't think any department had any different treatment.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Rita?
If you still want to maintain that structure, as Councilman Cantorecki indicated, I suggest that you maybe set up a meeting with Mr. Murphy and restructure that, and we can always, we as a council can amend, you know, if you want a tier system or whatever, how you want to do that in your department, just long you don't exceed what has been approved. You know, we can still keep your format there.
Yeah, just talk to payroll. Rita? Just talk to payroll, because they'll, tell us what, you know, it can't exceed it, but if it's below it, that's what you want to do. But is it about that or is it elected officials?
It's not only, but there is a lot of disparity in some elected officials.
So you're talking about elected, this isn't about elected officials?
No, it's not.
This is about your employees?
Yes.
Getting more money? But it's, you don't like the fact that maybe they might, you don't want to pay them as much as what's budgeted?
No.
So it's about, she says it's about communication. So which is it?
Can you come to the microphone, please? We can't hear you.
Yeah. Yeah. What is the issue so we can try to help solve it? Well, you know, you were blindsided, I got that, but how can we, what is it really that you're, what are we really worried about?
I think part of it is transparency and communication is what Rita's trying to get across.
About which?
The budget.
Okay.
The guideline that she was given in April.
I'm sorry, Lana, could you please state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Lana Cleary with offices at 101 South Main in the basement of the county clerk's office. I think what Rita's trying to state is a little frustration on her part of lack of transparency and communication. We learned that we went from a 1% raise to this structured minimum $32,000 and a $1,500 increase next year for employees that make 30,000 to 39,000, and I think it's like $1,200 for $40,000.
Right.
Primarily through the newspaper.
Well, because.
Primarily through the newspaper, Mike.
Understood, but they hadn't passed the budget, which is why they didn't talk to the department heads in terms of what they are planning to do. And we can't, and so in terms of transparency, the media was there, they're going to talk about what they're going to do.
Right.
So you were upset, just for the record, you're upset because you found out through the paper that your employees are going to get more money? I mean, I'm just, I mean.
I understand that, but Mike, do you understand what we're saying? I'm talking about communication.
Kind of, I guess. I guess, I guess, I'm just a little bit.
Communication.
I'm speaking right.
And also a tier structure. And the way that the budget is written, it states, I understand what you were all clarifying.
Yeah, they're trying to.
Now, Mr. Cantorecki clarified, and the rest of you clarified, that it is open for discussion of like, minimum clerk employee does not have to start at 32,000 that is brought in off the street, but when you, lack of communication, I think, is what part of the frustration is for her and transparency. With all due respect, council, because we mean no disrespect, I think that's where some of Rita's, our office's frustration comes from.
Well, I do think the.
And communication.
I think the minimum salary has to be 32,000, right? We said it at that.
For full time.
For full time, right?
Yes.
So that.
Including an employee starting new?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so then that's different than what was discussed five minutes ago?
No.
That's the wage floor.
That's the wage floor.
But within that, you can make the adjustments. But then I have a question about the process, John and Mike. So, the departments, as the budget's going along, they don't have access to see what's happening with their budget, or what is that typically, that communication?
Yeah, no, we don't, as we're going and you guys are discussing, we don't give, you know, an updated version of here's where they're at now with their discussions. We do not do that. That, I mean, you can imagine whether, okay, well, and here, we've just met here in week two, and here's where we are at week two, here's an update, and blast it out because, I mean, I don't know. And frankly, I'm a little bit taken aback that, you know, they're trying to help your employees and give you more money for it.
Mike, it has nothing to do with that. I am totally grateful for that.
Yeah, so don't make it that.
That's the first time, that's the first time I heard it. Thank you for that.
I'm not hearing that.
It's not that, it's not that at all.
No.
Okay, you're grateful for the money, because otherwise, take your 1%.
I started out the conversation saying I am very grateful, the raises.
I missed that, I apologize, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Don't get that wrong.
You wanted to get, sort of, you wanted these guys to be in more contact with you in terms of where they were, where their thinking was.
Well, we had asked for a copy of the budget back after the last public meeting also, and I asked for it again, in which I was.
Asked who?
The auditor's office.
I don't.
I sent it to the clerk's office today.
No, well, we asked for one after the last meeting, but I said it was all, with all due respect, we are very grateful.
That's right, there's no ungratefulness in going from 1%, which would have gave a clerk $350 a year raise to 1,575.
Right.
And some of them, almost $2,000. That's not the issue. The issue was communication and transparency in that.
I don't know, frankly, though, going forward.
Not with you, Mike.
But I don't know what else, going forward, just thinking of next year, maybe we need to sit down and talk about it, because I don't know how to improve that. How, what would that look like? We don't have to deal with it now, but I do want to, you know, what can we do to fix that? I don't know what that is. You know, these guys met, I don't know how many hours, you know, on so many.
I said it's, I'm totally grateful, and I.
All right, well, we'll talk, we'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Mr. Root?
Two points. Number one, I think all of our budget meetings were open to the public, so anybody was able to come and hear what we were discussing. But second of all, I am sympathetic to Rita's point. It's a point I used to make all the time, I haven't made it for several years. Mike knows where I'm going, he was on the council back when I make this point. And that's if we are going to issue a budget letter and then turn around and punish the people who follow the guidelines and reward those that don't, really does get my gall. And that's one of the reasons I voted against this budget tonight, because there's been a department that has consistently ignored this, the guidance of the budget letter every year, and every year they get rewarded for it. Actually, there's a couple of them, but, and, you know, so I get, I get, in fact, I've often thought, do the department heads that follow the guidance of the letter realize they're really kind of being fools? Because just look at your compatriots down the hallway who don't every year follow it and come out of it with a lot more than those people who do. And you'll remember for years, I said, those that do what we ask, we punish them, and those who disobey, or whatever you want to call it, don't listen to the guidance we give, get rewarded.
You know, Mr. Root, when you say punish and disobey, I mean, this is county government.
That's not the best word.
You know, thank you.
But those that get rewarded.
Well, punish, disobey, and rewarded.